Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order.
And then I have Sophia come up with her. And Sophia Boar is gonna help us lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Sophia Boar is a third grade student in Ms. Fleming's room, Ms. Fleming, she's right there. She nominated Sophia for being an amazing student and a third grader in our building. She's caring and she has a huge heart. Students gravitate towards her because they know that she will always have something kind to say. Sophia is an honest student who, who always reflects on her actions. When faced with a hard decision, Sophia knows how to make the right choice. Sophia's a great younger and older sister, has an older brother in our school also, and she loves her family and her dad very much. She's part of the third grade chorus this year also with Mr. Smith. She was nominated for the Sato because of how she makes our school a respectful and safe place to be. She's a great example of how to soar as a Maryvale flyer. Congratulations, Sophia. I don't know why I printed this so small. Why did I do that? Tonight is really an honor to recognize someone who's truly left an unforgettable mark on our school, and it's Mr. Gary Noriega. So the past twenty-six years, I couldn't believe it when someone numbered on my Maryvale intermediate. Gary's been more than just a teacher. He's been a steady guiding presence. He's always calm, thoughtful, and patient. Whether he's navigating a complex science concept or supporting a student through a tough moment, Gary always brings a level-headed demeanor and a deep care for others to the forefront. Gary's an incredible educator and friend as well. He's always helpful, kind, and well-spoken. He listens carefully, speaks with purpose, and treats everyone, students and colleagues alike, with genuine respect. He believes in all students and it shows in everything that he does. Whether students are struggling or soaring, Gary meets them where they're at and he ensures that they have a place in his classroom. When challenges arise, everyone goes to Gary, including myself. Gary never lets any challenge shake his calm spirit. He responds with patience, professionalism, and a deep-rooted belief in doing what's right. Whether someone needs a hand, a sounding board, or just simply a friend, Gary's always there. He's touched countless lives at Maryvale Intermediate, inspiring students, mentoring new teachers, and reminding all of us what it looks like, what it looks like to lead with kindness, humility, and strength. While we are heartbroken that Gary's leaving the Intermediate building this year to go to the middle school with Mr. Frank, and we hate to see him leave, we are so grateful for all that he's given to us. The middle school is not just gaining the science teacher, they're gaining a true treasure. Gary will be missed beyond measure, but his legacy here will last far beyond his final date to Intermediate. Gary, thank you for your incredible service, your unwavering heart, and your quiet leadership. We are all better for having worked with you and we wish you all the best in this next chapter.
Do we have any resident input?
So I'm gonna start with the primary school. So the first thing I have is the primary school's art show and ice cream social was held for grades pre-K to second grade. The cares program arranged for Glenn Cohen to perform in the cafeteria for the students. Students and families enjoyed looking at beautiful artwork while enjoying ice cream. Special thank you to our Ms. S. Roll, art teacher, our PTO staff, volunteers, and student volunteers that helped make the event a success. It was very well attended. And those are just some photos from the event. Okay, the next thing I have is on April 29th, at the Erie County Sheriff's Office, K-9 Unit visited and did two presentations for our students on how a police dog, Ziki, helps, uh, Zeke, helps people stay safe and works with the Sheriff's Department. On May 1st, a first grade parent volunteer came in and did a presentation on NASA and space for the first graders, and there's a photo from that. And then additional piece of information we have is the High School National Art Honor Society completed our diversity enhanced project for each class at the primary school. They celebrated how all of us are unique, accepted, and special. Thank you to the high school art department and high school art students for their hard work. Posters were displayed on the classroom door or hallway during the art show.
For the intermediate school, these are some pictures from a student cook-off that they had. More pictures from the cook-off. And then they also had a, they also had a day of fun with some games, and then parents came and joined them as well. From the middle school.
Their eighth graders returned safely from Washington D.C. They learned a lot about the Capitol and the fund. Special thanks to the Board of Education and Superintendent Dandy for supporting an amazing opportunity for their students. They're in the middle of administering the NYAS three through eight assessments. Math was held last week. ELA and science are being administered this week, of course. Many eighth graders are able to attend a field trip to AKG and a large portion of the cost was covered by a grant that Mr. Russo applied for. Mr. Frank and Ms. Bancroft scooped ice cream for about two hundred and twenty-five students who made the honor roll or high honor roll in the third quarter, because nearly half of their students. And then an additional hundred students who made the merit roll. This is a testament to the hard work and dedication of all those eighth girls in Maryville.
For the high school, while the therapy dog will be visiting the library during lunch on Wednesday equals Thursday, this event was a collaboration between Mrs. Cookbear and Mrs. Brown, our librarian and our social worker. For upcoming events, today we had our unified basketball game. All students and staff were attending to watch Maryville and Percy. It was a success, Maryville did win, and it was a huge turnout. The fifty-day bash is coming up on the fourteenth after school activities between staff and students to celebrate fifty days remaining for, for the school year. Also coming up this month is moving update in the annual hot dog roast on the twenty-second. Then on the thirtieth, we'll be having the senior breakfast and slideshow as well as prom later that night. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And in light of, I believe you guys have an exam, you're free to go. Good luck. Yes, good luck.
Dr. Lynn? For me, since I'm ready, you know, for several months, we've been preparing, developing, presenting the budget for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. We've gone over the details over the last several meetings, and there really isn't anything that's changed. But for anybody who is here or online that hasn't had some of those details, I've got a few slides to go through, a couple weeks here before our budget vote. Focus on the expenditures with this slide.
Can I have a motion to open the public hearing on the proposed twenty-five, twenty-six school budget?
Motion.
Second, all in favor?
All in. Thank you. Very good. Good point. This slide shows the three components of the budget, administrative, capital, and program. Compares them from the current year budget to next year's. If you look at the slide, the real highlight is, you know, where are we spending our money? And again, we focus, we make this point every year, it's in our program section of the budget. Focusing on kids, classrooms, activities, things for our students. The marketing business as well to administrative and capital. Overall, the budget proposed for next year is sixty-three million four seventy-eight, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars. It's an increase of just over three point five million. Some of the notable changes that we wanna highlight in the budget for next year are that there is a new math intervention feature, if you will, at the intermediate school. There's a new ENL teacher included in the budget. Special ed teacher for a new in-district class. And a teacher aid at the primary school for student behaviors, kind of focusing on, on that issue at our primary school. Additionally, through Erie one BOSIS, we are in the process of planning for a behavioral specialist. There are additional intermural activities for students based on surveys and things that they pointed out that they would like. We've been trying to spend some time putting money in the budget, but also working to figure out what are those things specifically that were requested by students and trying to make those specific activities work for them. Second one up from the bottom is a community use supervisor. Now that we have this new gymnasium and space with a track and so forth, and our buildings are used by different groups and things, we wanna make sure that what can be available for our community to come in and use it is done. And we think that includes having what we've termed for budget purposes at this point, a community use supervisor. We're working through those details and how that will work and function. That will still take a little bit of time. But we wanna be able to have somebody dedicated to making our buildings, facilities accessible for our community to come in and use. There's also money in our budget continuing the letters training program for our staff. One thing we're doing this coming year is instead of just really focusing on training the staff year after year in the different components, if we can train the trainer, then that will in the long term reduce our costs because you will have internal staff who will be able to train the next groups in the future years. And letters, I might add, is related to the science of reading, which is a new mandate from New York State to ensure that, it's a different way of teaching reading. I guess we have to certify as a district that, that our teachers are trained in it. And so we've been, you know, working on the training for that. And so letters is related to the science of reading and reading instruction.
Quick question. I thought we were also adding two aides to the primary. Is that a different section or is that?
Well, we went from two to one. The behavioral spec, uh, the teacher aid for student behaviors was gonna be two. There were some changes with tuition needs and placements and students moving in that added costs on our tuition line, so we took one of those two aides for behavior, students' behavior. And we can only at this point include one.
So is that the behavioral specialist that we're getting, or is that just that?
No, the behavioral specialist will be a totally different person hired through BOSIS, BOSIS Services, but we want our own in-district teacher aide. We wanted to. And if things change, you know, we find that it can be put back in and planned for, that is a priority.
On the flyer that's going out, it said to teacher aides.
Well, the, um.
That's what I got everybody?
There's a teacher aide that actually is not on this slide, as you say that. For that special education class, the third bullet down, we're adding a new teacher. That special ed class requires a teacher aide that doesn't currently exist. So there is technically a second teacher aide that we're adding. In part. Second behavior aide back.
All right.
Yes. Yeah, and in part that's kinda why the student behaviors teacher aide dropped from two to one. Just in the past, it's been four, three or four weeks, we've had lots of students move that, net for choir placements and actual needs that we didn't, we couldn't anticipate. Yeah, it's not, it's like enrollment and growth in schools isn't just like July and August. Whether that was traditionally always the case or not, but it seems like that's when you would expect it. It is every day. It's been our experience. Just the other day, we had one family with.
In the past three weeks, we've had thirteen special education students move into district.
So that's what caused that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's definitely having an impact. But where we stood in the budget presented, we think we've got things covered very well. On the opposite side of the expenses are the revenues. Obviously, you wanna balance what you're spending with the revenues you take in. And we really have, well, there's three big categories, if you will. There's maybe six lines here and three on the next page. Property taxes. This is a twenty, almost twenty-four million dollar number. It's a five hundred and thirty-one thousand dollar increase. We've said this before, I mean, and that is the number that goes out on our property tax cap. It's two point two seven percent increase. But I just want to point out again that the pilot payment is row two on this page, shows a ninety-eight thousand dollar decrease. That property that was paying a hundred thousand dollars in a pilot payment is gonna pay property taxes now next year instead. So we're shifting a hundred thousand dollars up into that property tax line. That's within our tax cap, that is the tax cap number. But that hundred thousand dollar shift being paid by one, what I'll term to be a new taxpayer, a property taxpayer, means that everybody else who's paid property tax for the current year, they're gonna split, if you will, that four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollar tax increase, not the five thirty-one. A lot there, can be very confusing, important things to note, it's within the tax cap. And there is a shift from a pilot payment for a business to a property tax that takes it back next year. Some change in sales tax, some other local revenue. The big, you know, benefit increase for us is where often where we spend money, are on expense-driven aides for one thing. Higher transportation costs, more aide, higher tuition, special ed, public access cost aides or expenses, you get more revenue for those, more BOSIS expenses, more BOSIS aide. Foundation aide is up for us as well, but state aide is up just under three million dollars going into next school year. There's a lot of zeros on this next page in that far right column, but I think it's important to point out that the continuation of our revenues is the use of fund balance. And we are sustaining the levels of fund balance that we've used in the current year into twenty-five, twenty-six as well. Again, it shows matching increase in dollar change of three point five million and then a total revenue of the sixty-three four seventy-eight and change. Any questions on the revenues? We've already talked about this, I wasn't thinking it was a slide, so, but this is the tax cap that points I was just making as we looked at the revenue slide. The propositions that voters will see when they go to the, to the machine, they will see proposition one is vote yes or no on the twenty-five, twenty-six budget as presented. Proposition two, we have talked about, was board approved in the last meeting to ask the voters to approve a capital reserve. It's a yes/no vote. And lastly, not least, there are two board seats that are up for election that voters will be voting for. One seat's a five-year term, Adam Simzak is running unopposed. There is a three-year term, one seat where Jason Byer is running unopposed. Contingency budget, again, we do point out, you know, that's the increase in the tax levy. It's that five hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars would be a change moving forward without the budget being passed. The budget vote is on Tuesday, May twentieth, from noon to nine. It's as usual in our dinner gym. So please pass the word, you know, we want, you know, it's been kinda quiet, at least so far, but we want, we don't want to be complacent, we want people to, to come out and vote so that the results really does represent our community. So please pass the word, mark your calendars, and come vote on May twentieth. Any other questions, comments?
So the, the persons that would be, you know, hired for the facilities, right? We can't get anybody to do like volunteer hours, like kids or anything like that? Instead of paying somebody that we would use to get an aide back in the schools?
That, that's worth pursuing, make a note to, to see, I don't know that we've talked about that being an option, but absolutely if somebody's willing to do that.
I mean, four hours here, four hours there, you know? Help them out, help us out, and we're gonna pay anybody. And then we can get an aide back in the school to help them out.
Cause there is a lot to it, there's a lot of different groups, you know, scheduling the activities, you know, inside the buildings, this person may very well do things that are outside the buildings, work in combination with sports teams and athletics. So we wanna make sure we have the right person, not maybe a rotating person every other week. May or may not be the best for the whole part of it, but that could be a part. You know, that there is volunteers who help somebody else, so the cost of that one person could be a little lower. But yeah, we'll definitely have to keep that as part of our brainstorming as we work through this discussion. Cause honestly, we haven't gotten into the detail of how could this work in a few weeks, maybe a month or so. Kinda put it in throughout some ideas that we think this number would work. And we're like, let's work on that, you know, June, July, August, and be ready to go. So that's a very good point though.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Public hearing.
Yeah, let me close it next. No, we'll close it tonight, the next one's gonna be open, I'm sorry, I misspoke.
Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Call second.
All in favor? I need a motion to open a public hearing on the proposed code of conduct updates.
Make a motion.
All in favor?
Do you need it on the screen?
No. No, no, I can just see through it.
Hi, everyone. So we put together a committee to review our annual code of conduct. We met on April twenty-third in the one-night hall of the high school. So the committee consisted of stakeholders across all the buildings in the district, including building administrators, students from each building, teachers from each building, and then parent representatives. So that that way we have input from all the buildings across the district. So I'm just gonna kinda go through the code of conduct and just let you know, like, the proposed changes that the committee came up with. It's important to note that just the backstory and understanding of where these changes came from. So each year, we usually will go through incidents that maybe were not found in the code of conduct as they relate to student discipline. So that's one, one way that we get our feedback, when we kinda collaborate and decide on whether we wanna add things or maybe we need to reword things. So that way, when we are dealing with specific behavioral issues, that we, we're covered in the code of conduct. Another thing is we will look at what other districts' code of conducts have in there and we'll kinda use that as another source of input when we're revising our code of conduct. And then the main thing is we, when we, just thinking about the things that we add, we also wanna make sure that we're, we're in alignment with any state requirement and things that need to be put into the code of conduct. So having said that on page four, so it goes through the definitions as it relates to the DAD Act, which relates to student harassment and bullying. It's a law that protects students in public schools from bullying. So one of the definitions was the definition of race, which I'll read the definition, means a group of persons related by a common descent or heredity for purposes of immigration. The U.S. Census Bureau uses terms such as white slash Caucasian, black slash African-American, or African descent, Asian, biracial, Hispanic, Latinos, et cetera, to describe and classify the inhabitants of the United States. So that was the whole definition. There is, so we're a few years behind, but the Crown Act, which was passed in twenty twenty-one, which stated that schools need to include in their definition of race, race also including hair texture, protective hairstyles such as braids, locks, and twists. So we just added that to the definition of race. The next proposed change, it's an addition on page twelve for our dress code. So this was our counselors collaborated with some of their colleagues who work in other districts. And what we're noticing is we're starting to see districts are adding the limitation of wearing bathing suits. So bathing suits not being permitted unless it's a specific activity that permits it. So if there, the kids have to change into a bathing suit for swim class and PE, or if it's an extracurricular, kids are in swim theme. And again, we don't, not, it's not that we are sort of, we're not seeing students that are, you know, walking in the doors with bathing suits. It's more of just a preventative approach that we're starting to see other districts that are adding in their, in their dress code as well. The next on page sixteen, which is under, I just wanna make sure I have the, it's disorderly conduct. So these are the things that students are not allowed to do. Sorry, I said page fifteen, I started at page fifteen, I skipped one. So subsection D of the disorderly conduct, number nine, it originally stated bullying and intimidation, which includes engaging in actions or statements that put individual fear of bodily harm and/or emotional discomfort, for example. So then it goes to list examples, play fighting is an example of horseplay and teasing. So we just expanded on those examples and we're proposing to add posturing, intimidation, verbal or physical threats, as just a few more examples of that. And then we also added bullying and intimidation that could be directed at either a student or a student. Just to be just as I said. The next proposed change is an addition. So this would follow after number nineteen. So number nineteen, disorderly conduct, goes in and talking, it talks about how students are not allowed to possess cigarettes, cigar pipes, e-cigarettes, vapes, dab pens, or any paraphernalia within. So we are proposing to add another number underneath that, which is possession of a lighter, matches, or any tools or device which uses mechanical, electrical, or other means to create a flame to ignite a variety of flammable items, including, but not limited to, cigarettes, methane, gas fireworks, candles, and campfires. So this came up because occasionally we will, when we have to conduct certain procedures for students, if we have reasonable suspicion of, they may be in possession of things like a vape or drugs. There are times where we may find matches or a lighter as students will beg. And when having conversations with our, with our parents, there have been times where parents have questioned whether that was in the code of conduct or not. There's nothing explicitly before, up to this point, that states that students are not allowed to have lighters. We've always, we've always assumed that underneath the paraphernalia. But I did have, just to share, my personal experience, I did have a parent rebut that saying, well, my son has a lighter not to smoke cigarettes or cigar pipes. My son has a lighter, he uses it professionally. You know, nonetheless, you still are not allowed to have a lighter within school ground. So that's why we discussed creating a separate category for that. The next page is page seventeen. Um, the next page is page seventeen, um, so, number twenty-two, previously stated buying, possessing, hiding, consuming, selling, distributing, or exchanging, or assisting slash attempting to do so, um, prescription and over the counter drugs, including but not limited to dietary supplements and weight loss pills. So we are proposing, um, to add energy drinks to this, um, and that, this came up, uh, because sometimes, uh, there's a, there's a, a blend in those energy drinks where you may not know exactly what that mix is, that you're getting in there. Um, and sometimes the caffeine, um, contents are extremely high, um, and for some of our younger kiddos, while they may think that they need caffeine to wake up in the morning, but that can actually, um, cause more issues such, you know, as anxiety or, um, you know, higher energy consumers. Um, we did ask because we recognize that, well, we may wanna be more strict at elementary or middle school with that, um, buildings, but by not allowing students to have energy drinks, um, it may warrant it for some of our upperclassmen at the high school, so we asked that if we could, um, include that students are permitted to consume energy drinks at the, at the discretion of the building principal.
So, it's not okay for a freshman, but it's okay for a senior?
Well, um, I would say building wide, if we were to allow it, we would just allow it for all students, sorry.
I feel like that's kind of a little, both sides there, it's saying that they can't do it, but then they are, they can do it.
So, we, we took that wording, um, I'll use an example, previously was our, uh, like, set up personal electronic policy, so the way it's currently written is it says it's prohibited during school day, but building principals, um, have discretion to allow them at passing time or in cafeteria in those common times. Um, so we, we recognize that it, at the high school level, as I said, like, the kids are older, um, they may be able to handle the caffeine more. The example, some of our students, you know, they're, they're studying longer nights for, um, some of their state testing or their AP exams, so, at the high school, we feel that we would allow it, we wouldn't prohibit that for, for students. Um, but the middle school and elementary grades, um, the building administrators would like to not allow students to have those. If that clarifies a little bit.
Should, should we add in, you know, coffee and other things that I see all the students walking around with? Even a hot, even a hot chocolate, you know, if it's a younger student.
Yeah, we could, we could.
I mean, at one point, where do we stop, I guess is kinda where I'm going.
The students actually brought up the same question, uh, in, in the committee, um, the difference is the energy drinks have three to four times the amount of caffeine as one cup of coffee. But, that's kinda the difference that, big difference you're talking about. Um, also, as, uh, Marcelo Tanzio said, a lot of the energy drinks have these like proprietary blends in them with other stimulants in addition to caffeine that coffee wouldn't normally have.
So then why aren't we just banning energy drinks altogether?
Well, if we actually went along with, I, I would agree with him. Um, the only argument that I really see is our athletes who might be doing like a pre-workout type drink, uh, but I think if we went in more consistent with our wellness policy, it actually specifies the amount of caffeine in, in that drink, so it kinda goes like, a cup of coffee is, I don't know, what is it, ten milligrams of caffeine, but anything above that would not be permitted.
What's the, what's the, they can always put it into a different cup and walk around with it, so how are we gonna monitor something like that? They're smart, kids are smart.
Yeah, and that was one of the current concerns that came up in our discussion as a committee, um, as, you know, we, there, you may not be able to monitor it, or they may have something from Tim Wardens and says that it's decaf, but it's actually caffeinated. Um, or it's a hot, they might say it's a hot chocolate, but it's actually a coffee. So, I think that's, you know, just kinda echoing based off of what Pete explained, I think the reason that the energy drinks specifically came up is because, you'll see some of them, like, there's, there's one called like Bang Energy Drink, and it has creatine in it, um, and beta alanine, which is like substances that are in pre-workout energy drinks, you know, and do we want our kids coming into mod one at seven thirty drinking what they should be dri- you know, drinking before they go to complete a workout? So, that was, that was the main reason why we brought that up in our discussion.
Should we, and I know, you know, this is kinda the public hearing on this, so, um, that's not kind of it is, um, you know, should this almost be broken into two categories? You know, because in one sense, you're looking at buying, possessing, hiding, selling, distributing, prescription, over the counter drugs, but then we just throw in energy drinks in there, like, I feel like it's, should be almost its own category to kind of address some of those concerns.
Makes sense.
Yeah. You know, and I, it's too late for this year's, but, you know, for next year's, well, I don't know if it's too late for this year's, but.
We can bring it up.
So we can make changes.
We could reconvene as a committee and revisit that, and maybe we, um, we can do a little bit more research to see what other districts how they have that word in, under their, or evidence in the conduct.
Yeah, so, makes sense.
That, and that's a good idea. Um, the next was on page twenty-one, so it goes into talking about who is allowed to give specific privilege or, uh, consequences to a student as it relates to discipline. So the main is, so number sixteen, where it talks about suspension from a transportation, um, it's only listed as administrator. Eighteen, where it says suspension from a social or extracurricular activity, it only states administrator currently. Uh, number nineteen, where it says suspension of other privileges, it states only administrator, and then number twenty, in school suspension, only states administrator. So this has come up in previous conversations, um, a lot of times, uh, our dean of students and assistant principals, when we're investigating student disciplinary, um, incidents, and we're assigning consequences, we're always collaborating. Um, you know, so at the high school, Stephanie, um, and Tim are right there when we're making decisions. But there may be times where I'm in a meeting or an observation, and I may not be able to be, to sit directly across from a student, and we're trying to get ahold of the student's parents and give, you know, give them their due process rights and inform them. So, they may radio me or text me or give me a call if I'm, if I'm not right there in the office, um, and we'll collaborate on that decision, and it's Stephanie or Tim may be the ones to meet with the student and formally assign them the consequence. But ultimately, you know, if it's a, if it's a suspension, in school suspension, um, it's me or Stephanie that are signing off on the letter, um, or if it's an out of school suspension, it's myself that's signing off on the letter. Um, so we're proposing to add the wording for adding dean of students, what we put for each of those numbers is a dean of students may impose a penalty in conjunction with an administrator. And then assuming that assistant principal, um, would fall underneath that definition of administrator.
So what is Tim's, um, title, he's technically not a dean of students.
He's part-time, he's, he's athletic director, but.
But is he, is he, is, cause this says dean of students, like, I would say, he's an athletic director, was he count, is that count?
He's a part-time dean of students in high school, he, he handles discipline.
What is that, like, is a.
Oh, the wording you mean?
The wording in his, you know what I mean, you know what I'm saying, yeah, cause like, these DJs, dean of students, you know?
His, his official title is athletic director, I see.
Yes, so he's technically, as a parent, I was like, he's not, he's not a dean of students.
That could be, yeah, that is, I don't know how we.
I don't know how he would word it, but, yeah.
If he's a, is the athletic director considered a administration?
No.
Should we also change that from saying administrator comma to administrator and or the dean of students in conjunction with?
Yeah.
Because you don't wanna be tied to, well, it says in conjunction with, but, you know, he made the decision, or she made the decision.
Yeah, I would, I would say, like, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, it's, we're always having that conversation. Some of the things, and that's where like, I don't say hundred percent, some of those things are pretty, um, formulated, you know, they're pretty.
Sure, if you do this.
The worst was it's because that point zero one percent.
Yeah, yeah.
Also.
So.
Either word, maybe.
So we use a, we use a matrix, right, so we'll u- we'll use a matrix, and we follow the matrix, and if we regress a discipline, we'll look at the incident, you know, we'll look at the student's discipline history, and if it falls within that threshold, it's pretty, where we try to be as consistent as possible. So, and those are conversations that we'll have at the beginning of the year, where we say, you know, uh, kid gets off, off the vape for first offense, has, you know, three days of in school suspension, you know, that's the, the routine.
To Kristen Jacob's point, I think we need that wordsmith to make it as.
Yeah, that point one percent.
Broad as possible.
Okay. I think that's, that's another thing that we'll turn back off to the committee when we revisit a ton of other, other items as well.
Thank you.
Um, almost done. On page thirty-five, um, section twelve, where it talks about student searches and interrogations, the second paragraph, um, it talks about, uh, who the board authorizes, um, to conduct searches. Um, so, as it, as it stands, it states, in addition, the board authorizes administrators to conduct searches of students and their belongings. We're proposing to add dean of students and school resource officers, uh, because a lot of times the two of them are involved in those searches with Stephanie and I, or with Pete and Vanessa, um, you know, or I, or even Kristen, you know, if you guys have to do searches, sometimes Bill has to be involved. So that's our proposals that we're adding on as just authorized personnel who are able to participate in, uh, school searches.
Page is that on, Joe?
Page thirty-five.
I think the same thing with trying to add Tim's name on it, or his title or something like that, cause, you know, it's just, something we just needed to word.
Alright.
Can we change his title, just we put like athletic director slash dean of students?
We just put AD on the, on that.
It might have been on his title when he was appointed.
I think it was posted that way, so we should go back and check the board minutes, I think he was appointed that way. Cause it.
It was athletic director slash dean of students.
Like, dean of students, it was posted that way, the job.
Yeah, let's go back and check.
Yeah.
And if it's not, make that.
We could change the wording.
Yeah.
In that same section with searches, um, under police searches, um, so on page thirty-six, and then it continues to page thirty-seven, it's under police searches and interrogations of students. So it goes into talking about police officials may enter school property or school function to interrogate or search a student, or conduct a formal investigation involving students only if they have one of the three following conditions in that. So the first states a search or an arrest warrant. The second, um, states receive the report that a crime has been committed on school property or at a school function. Um, so we're proposing to add if they have received a report or have probable cause to believe that a crime, um, has been committed on school property. Um, and that is just language that we took from, um, other districts, um, just to specify, um, that probable cause piece.
What is that, what is that threshold, probable cause?
So, the.
I know what it means for school officials, but, I mean, Bill can, I don't know.
We can both, so, we, at, at the building level, um, we need reasonable suspicion. So, we have a reliable source that comes to us and reports that they, they saw, or they, um, they received a report from a colleague, um, that a student may be in possession of something they shouldn't have, such as drugs, for example. Um, that we have, that gives us reasonable sus- suspicion as administrators, deans of students, um, bill to collaborate and conduct a search of a student.
But in the context of probable cause for, for a police officer, what is that, how is that different than probable cause for like, a school administrator?
Bill, I had to further you a little bit on probable cause.
You guys don't actually need probable cause, you just need the reasonable suspicion, um, which would be like, somebody coming up and saying, hey, I heard Johnny's got such and such, um, I wouldn't be able to search somebody based off of that. If somebody said Johnny pulled out such and such during lunch, I go to a video, I see it, Johnny pulled something out, fits his story, now we got probable cause, pull that person down, you'd be able to search him for such and such.
Because of the video or because of the verbal report?
No, because of the video.
Okay.
Verbal report was reasonable suspicion that allowed me to look into probable cause.
Gotcha.
I guess, investigate.
There's, there's the bridge.
With like a Facebook post or anything, post on social media via, like a.
It, it would all just come, it depends.
Depends what it says.
Yeah, ev- every single situation would be different, it would just depend on if it's just what somebody saw or somebody heard. Um, there, there'd be a big difference between that, and if there was evidence to substantiate what they saw, um. I don't know, helps.
Would, would, um, like odor of a substance?
An odor of a substance would give us probable cause, seeing of the substance, like saying, traffic stop, just pull somebody over, there's something, and they can ask for probable cause, um.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, and then the third reason that would give, um, a police officer the ability to conduct a search is if, um, a student, if they've been invited by a school official, um, to, so it ju- previously in our code, it just states if they've been invited by a school official, um, so we are just proposing to expand upon that and say, if they've been invited by a school official to investigate a crime alleged to have occurred on school premises or at a school function. So just define, define that a little bit more. And then the last proposed change, um, goes back to our, our dignity act, um, for all students. So, when talking about who is able to conduct, um, the, the investigation of a dignity act. So, uh, we receive a formal written dignity act complaint, um, we have Mary Bell, has a, a district complaint form. Anyone can submit it on behalf of a student, um, and then within a day, um, we have to begin that investigation. So, in the second paragraph, it states that the superintendent or principal, the principal's designated, um, or the, forgive me, am I forgetting part of the DAC?
The coordinator.
The DAS coordinator, yeah, dignity act coordinator. The dignity act coordinator will lead or supervise an investigation, um, so we are, um, asking to add dean of students, um, just because dean of students work so closely with the administrative team, that oftentimes they are collaborating with us because they have that relationship with the students, um, and, you know, they're dealing with the student behavior, so they'll help us with those investigations.
Are you asking the dean of students to help assist the investigation or to lead the investigation? Because I think, like, the.
It says will lead or supervise.
Yeah, that, I think we have to be careful with the deans leading them, because the dignity act coordinators and others receive training, specific training on how to implement the DAS stuff. So, uh, to, to put that in the hands of, uh, of a dean of students, I think might, I think we need to be careful with that.
Okay.
Um, unless they receive, you know, appropriate training. Cause we wanna make sure that these complaints are investigated, that everything's done by the law, not that they can't do that, but, you know, I know that, that they haven't been trained right now.
Would we consider adding, you know, in other sentences in that paragraph, where they would, they can collaborate with a dignity coordinator or administrator? Right?
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, I think, uh, cause they're trained, yeah, I think that's great, but if they're not trained in it, I don't, there's a hundred percent chance of something, you know?
It's just it?
Yeah.
Oh, missing something.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and then in that paragraph, we're proposing to add, um, so I, there's sometimes, um, when there's a complaint, a lot of times it's student versus, you know, student on student complaint, but sometimes it's a complaint, um, made against a faculty or staff member. So our, currently our dignity act coordinators, I believe are our counselors across all the buildings, because they're one of the people that are training in sites.
Um.
Some for two sites, yeah.
And, and our school sites as well. So because they're in the same, um, unit as our teachers, um, they can sometimes put them in a tricky situation if they're having to investigate one of their colleagues in their, in their unit. Um, so we're asking to add, um, an additional sentence to that paragraph, um, which states that investigations will be led solely by an administrator if reported harassment, bullying, and or discrimination is made, um, against an administrator or a staff member. Just to be able to separate out those, um. Just to be able to separate out those, um, those IT members so that they're not investigating their colleagues.
Yep, that makes a lot of sense.
Um, and that is it for our proposed changes, do you guys have any other questions?
So the plan is we leave the this open for thirty days, so if the next board meeting will be beyond thirty days.
Okay.
And then we'll, you know, with the potential changes that we talked about tonight, we'll ask the board to, we'll close bubble caring and ask the board to put the amended code of conduct. Um, we should, let's let's talk about the, uh, cell phone ban, because that's not in the, uh, code of conduct. That was something that the governor said was going to be in the, uh, final state budget. The state budget is not finalized yet, it's supposed to be done by April first. Um, when the state budget's finalized, we anticipate we're gonna get specific guidance on how we implement the the bell to bell ban. When that happens, we'll be able to amend the language in the code of conduct, but right now we don't have any guidance from the state, so we didn't wanna. Make any changes that we may have had to change when we receive that that guidance, so once we receive the guidance, we're gonna reconvene the committee and implement that. Cause I think that's something that the committee members wanted as well, right?
Yes, yes.
That they support that, how did the students on the committee feel about that?
Um, I'd say it was, it was probably a mix of of both supporting, um, and some, you know, some students, um, being against it. Um, I think the students that were in favor of it recognize that it can be a distraction for them. Um, and then it also can sometimes relate to some social issues with their friends, especially if the students are on social media or texting their peers throughout the day. Um, so that that was kind of the feedback that we got from the ones that were in favor, that it would, um. Ideally, um, help them be able to focus better in the classes. One of the issues, uh, one of the concerns that was brought up by the committee is the safety concern, um, we often see it at the high school, I don't want to speak for the other buildings. Students are passing in the hallway and they, their headphones are so loud where they can't hear an adult speaking to them. Um, you know, and and an example like yesterday where we had a fire alarm pulled at the end of the day, we had to evacuate the building. In a situation like that, when we need to evacuate the building, if a student can't hear, or if they're not able to hear the directive from an adult number, um, that can create a huge safety risk. Um, so that was another reason, um, the students, I'd say mainly were the high school students who, um. Actually had a lot of good arguments, um, as to why they wanted to allow cell phones at the high school. Um, one of the reasons being if they, um, a lot of times they are the ones transporting their younger siblings, um, to and from home. So, um, if, you know, they they their parents need to get ahold of them and, you know, ask them to, um, you know, to take their younger brother or sister home. Or, uh, if, uh, they have to stay after school for a sport or for extra help, they'll be able to get ahold of their parents or their younger siblings to let them know. Um, hey, you may need to get picked up by mom or dad today, um, because I have to stay after at the high school. Um, or vice versa, if a practice is canceled or a club event is canceled after school, they'll be able to communicate that with them. Um. So we, you know, and we did, our counter argument was that, um, you know, we have cell phones in the main office. Um, so if students, um, need to get ahold of their siblings, um, or if their their parents, they can come down to the main office to to call them. Um, or, you know, we can assist on secretaries, administrators can assist on cafeteria merits or if you need. Um, another good point was, um, a lot of students use their calendars, the calendar app in their phones, um, for planners. So if they need to put important dates or, you know, important assignments or or deadlines, um, they'll put those on their calendar, um, and kind of set them as reminders. Rather than going paper-based, man. And that's.
Don't all the students have Chromebooks?
Don't they all have Chromebooks?
They do, so that was, yeah, so that was the counter argument is that you all have Chromebooks, so you could put that in your calendar.
That's like a problem.
They can email their parents, can't they?
Yeah, and then they'll be able to email their parents.
No.
I'd defend it in. No.
No.
They can't email their parents.
They can't, they can't email outside the Mary Bell U F S D.
No. Yeah.
Um, domain.
Okay, so they can't.
They play a prank.
At least not in the middle school or elementary schools.
I don't think the high school can either.
We give you this five, these are no, they have no chance.
Is there a, is there a, is there a specific area why they can?
They've been alerted to emails out, sorry, CC the parents and the parent emails not in that domain, so that has got a connection.
Well, that would be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and that's, some coaches still use that remind app to give them notification about, um, you know, practices and updates. So they get those updates on their phones, um, for their extracurriculars as well.
I thought we, uh, yeah, I thought we eliminated the remind.
Yeah, we should.
Thought it might well.
For the extra.
So I should take care of that itself, instead of not using the remind app.
Also, isn't there something in the code of conduct about wearing headsets in the halls and stuff like that?
Right now it's at the discretion of the building administrator.
I feel like that needs to change, I feel, people, if that's an issue, it should be banned across the school, headsets and stuff like that should be more.
Yep.
I think it's common with the.
Yeah, and and so.
Yeah, with the state stuff, it's common.
Yeah.
And that was part of the discussion for that section of electronic devices is that, um, just we would like to not see it allowed at any building across the district. Um, at any point during the school day. So we've always told them, um, with, you know, within reason, you could use it during passing time or in in the cafeteria. But, you know, one in, one out, and out of out of bodily mother, we're, we can hear you. Um, but it still seems to be an issue sometimes, so. We have students keep their earbuds in their lockers or their book bags, that shouldn't be an issue.
I think the biggest thing with with this bell to bell thing is gonna be, and I've I've said it numerous times, you know, the the middle school, the kids know. If they pull out a phone, they're they're in trouble. The high school, they know which teachers allow them and which teachers don't.
Consistency, yeah.
You know, so it's gotta be consistent that that all of the staff is not allowing it.
Yep.
So.
That's something, that's something that we recognize as a committee and, um, when we move forward with with this, you know, those.
The state's gonna dictate a lot of it.
Mm-hmm. Pete and I talked a lot about that and, you know, we're gonna be, we're gonna start that conversation with our faculty, you know, as early as we can, so that we're getting all the expectations out.
Any other questions for? What I had to?
Yes. Might as well say something.
Go for it.
Oh, seriously, there's a situation in Buffalo, this is what I wanna know about you guys. I don't know what it's like in Buffalo, but there is a problem, everybody knows about it. Uh, there was disciplinary things that happened, it was never reported, it's been hushed up, and some police officer had had, uh, exposed it. What happened, where is the 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 line that it stops with him being administrator and it comes to the school board? For discipline or for whatever, uh, thing you would have to do in a problem with with one of the students?
Well, the school, if, when it comes to school board, it's it's through appeal. So a parent appeals a suspension, appeals it to me, if I uphold the suspension, they wanna appeal to the board, they can appeal to the board. That's where the school board gets involved with suspensions.
Oh, I have no doubt.
So the the individual, and I think more specific, it's kind of that case that you were talking about.
Right, you know what I'm talking.
You know, everything that happens in the high school building, Mr. Otanzio is ultimately responsible for the discipline. If there's an issue where a parent thinks that it's too severe, they would appeal that to Mr. DeAngelo and not to us. But discipline is a hundred percent him. So as far as who's reporting what within the school, um, I believe that venue accused people of not reporting certain things that were happening. You know, that would all fall under the individual building administration.
Yeah, but then it came to the Buffalo school board, and it's like, okay, well, wait a minute, where does it come from, you know?
Well, that's the same thing if you came to us and said, you know, hey, my child is being abused in school and they're not doing anything about it. You know, that we would obviously work with Mr. DeAngelo and.
Not obviously.
But we would work with Mr. DeAngelo, who would then in turn work with, you know, the building administrator.
Okay, so, uh, him being the administrator in high school, right? Alright, so he has the power to actually suspend?
Mm-hmm. Via the code of conduct.
All principals do.
Yep.
Up to five days.
Up to five.
Up to five?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true, it's up to five days and then anything more comes.
It's a superintendent hearing.
Superintendent hearing.
Okay. Thank you. Good question, thank you.
Uh, just out of curiosity, if the budget doesn't pass from the phone thing and then there by the time in the thirty days of the open hearing, we don't add that to it. What's the contingency plan for that?
I think if this keeps dragging on and we find that we're gonna be in a pinch, we're just gonna put our own thing in the code of conduct about a about a bell to bell ban and then. Adjust as needed once we get the state guidance. I think in September, folks, I I think you can want it, you know, the the stakeholders of the high school, I think they want it, so I think if we, if it comes that, we're just gonna.
Why don't we just, we've been there enough.
I was gonna say, don't we have a budget from away from the day, remember that away from, away from the day?
We did, and we did that a few years ago, several years ago now.
Two thousand eighteen, nineteen, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's.
Something we did that.
Yeah.
That was before we were on the line.
Correct. I think we, you know, it's it's make, it's the budget's over a hundred late now, I think the reason why I did the document for now is we've been anticipating this, we're gonna take this long as a budget. There's really no, I don't understand what the holdup is with it, there's no controversy that we know of.
Do we have access to the promos verbiage? Nothing?
No.
And that's changed month to month too, because it was, I mean, I was at where they said that they were gonna pay it off the table this time around.
Yep, they did.
Now they're talking about, obviously, putting it back in.
Yep. And I think both policies and legislature agree that it's gonna be in there, we just don't know what it is gonna say.
What it's gonna say.
We'll, we'll make sure it's in there, I mean, it's gonna, in September, it'll, we'll have a policy in place.
What does our state now want?
So.
Discrepancy of the.
Yeah, so essentially states, you know, cell phones, um, including headphones, any personal electronic device is prohibited in the school day. Um, but then the last sentence that states that using your cell phone in the halls, um, and during class time. I'm sorry. Uh, students are permitted to use their cell phones during the passing time at the discretion of the building principal.
What page is that on?
Uh, page thirteen. And again, that is something that we we communicate to our faculty members that when they're, you know, I'll get on the morning announcements at the high school. And remind students, when you walk into your classrooms, your cell phones are silenced, your headphones are off, and they're put away where your teachers can't see it. Um, and then we allow, at the high school, we allow them to use them during passing time, during the cafeteria, as long as it's at a level where we, we can, they can hear us and, you know.
I like that we have, uh, MP three players and PSPs. Things that haven't been around since, uh, two thousand fifteen.
Great, D-tracks in there.
Uh, maybe.
I mean, I think that probably will be difficult to begin with, the ones that get used to it.
I think it's cool.
Especially as the kids come from middle school and they're used to that, I don't think it'll be as big of a problem, but.
Yeah, the biggest challenge will be the sophomore's age users, I think. But.
I think the kids will be resilient to it, I think it's not gonna be the kids that are gonna give us the difficult time on it.
No. Yes.
In the first round around, it would have worked, but then COVID happened, which forced everyone into electronic. So.
Okay.
Thank you, John, thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanna talk briefly about, um, a survey that we administered to our teaching staff, uh, this spring. And, um, you know, kind of the process, I have, um, up on the the screen, executive summary and initial plan of action. Kind of before I get into this, I wanna talk about, kind of, how we got to an executive summary. Um, we had about eighty-eight respondents to the teacher survey, which was about thirty-eight percent. Responses were spread across all four buildings, so so Jeff likes to hear me say this, they're statistically significant, right under the.
That's a good sample.
That's a good sample, um, although we'd like it higher, um, there were, there was a tremendous amount of raw data, just a lot of it. So we actually used artificial intelligence to help us summarize, uh, the key points in the survey. And, uh, it also took out any sort of, I don't know, our our biases, I guess, it was just, you know, specific, uh, artificial intelligence. Uh, drawing out those important points, um, so out of that summary, we asked artificial intelligence to to create this executive summary. And, um, from there, we we discussed it, um, and we talked about an initial plan of action, there are some things we we put in place already, some things we plan on putting in place. But it, I think it was a good exercise, I think, you know. Told us about some things that we knew we were doing well, and also some things that we needed better at, and I think that's the whole purpose of this, is that. It's not something that's gonna go on a shelf somewhere, it's something that we're gonna use to, uh, drive some improvement. We also gave surveys to our administrators in our CICA, which bill, um, instead of the survey, I think the CICA, they're they're more comfortable, we proposed like coming to one of your. Unit meetings and talking to you directly, I think we're we're waiting to to schedule that, but we definitely wanna do that, because we want, we want all of our units to have have a voice in the direction that we're moving in. Um, so this this survey, um. So again, thirty-eight, thirty-eight, this should be eighty-eight. So about thirty-eight percent, um, statistically significant because it it it, uh, had a diverse cross-section feedback from all across the district, all four buildings. I think, you know, it offers valuable insights into the current state of the district from the teachers' perspectives. I think the the, well, AI thinks the responses, uh, reflect a balanced representation of concerns, accolades, and suggestions from different teaching environments in different buildings. The key takeaways, um, that were pulled out, um, support for students. Teachers emphasized the need for additional support staff, particularly to address behavioral issues, that was the theme across a lot of the responses. Uh, and the evolving social, emotional needs of the students. That's why the the aid at the primary schools is not the last word, we just had, we had to adjust because of the influx of students, but we know that we need more, uh, behavioral supports. Um, I should back up, pause just a bit and say, um. Let the public know that, you know, although we're talking about an artificial intelligence summary, the board has access to the raw data. And they've had access all along, in fact, they could see the summary, see responses as they were coming in live. So the board, um, is not just being, you know, given artificial intelligence, I mean, they've they've had the, uh, the raw data all along, I just wanted to point that out. Um, another takeaway with positive leadership in administration, many teachers express appreciation for district administration, citing strong support, visible presence from the administrators. Concerned, there were concerns about workload and meeting times, a number of teachers suggested adjustments to the scheduling of faculty meetings, PLC meetings. Uh, to improve work life, work life balance, we'll talk about what we're planning to do there. Um, the classroom and building environment, physical environment was a big, uh, theme throughout this survey. This feedback highlighted the importance of maintaining and improving the physical environment cleanliness across the buildings. Um, some some teachers requesting more upgrades of primary school facilities, which we, which we are talking about with with our next capital project. Wellness, um, several teachers appreciated recent initiatives focused on teacher wellness and work-life balance, uh, expressing they felt valued valued and supported by the district. Um, again, with responses spread across all school buildings and grade levels, um, the survey offers a statistically significant view of the current teaching climate within the district. Um, it highlights both strengths and areas for improvement, allowing for a well-rounded snapshot, um, understanding of teacher perspectives. Again, this is not something that's going to sit on a shelf, it's gonna be, um, all the surveys and discussions with the units, year new and bill. They're gonna be tools for guiding decisions, um, continuing to to foster a supportive work environment and ensuring the continued success of, uh, staffing students here at Mary Bell. The philosophy should be, and I've said this to 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 folks across the district, we need to support the folks that are supporting the students directly. As our teachers, our support staff, um, if we support them, they they can better support, uh, the students. And it goes for us supporting our. And it goes for us supporting our, our, our administrators or supporting our teachers, it, 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 it goes, it goes that way, and I think that's been our focus this year, and that's gonna continue to be our focus. So what have we, what have we done so far? Well, cleanliness, for one thing. Um, Steve, Dave Hesse and I met with the head custodians on March eighteenth. We did a similar exercise with, with the custodians in that we summarized, um, through artificial intelligence, all the comments about cleanliness in the buildings. And we, we shared it with the head custodians and Dave. And, you know, generally, we discuss their roles as, uh, leaders in their own buildings to address their staff. We talked about their responsibility to, to check, oversee the work in the buildings, to make sure that areas are getting cleaned properly. I think we use the example of, is there a dust bunny that's sitting there, and it's, it's not moving, did the, did the places, did the, you know, rooms smell good? They need to have a plan for, um, monitoring that work, to ensure that work is getting done. Uh, we discussed the plan, and there it is, Dave, I ahead of myself a little bit, but we discussed a plan for Dave and the head custodians to review and monitor the work in each building. Because it's clear that the cleanliness needs to improve. So we're gonna continue to work on that, but that's something we started, uh, in March with, uh, with those folks. It wasn't really pulled out of the survey, but, uh, uh, by artificial intelligence, but a lot of the staff wanted more direct communication with us, um, central office administrators. So Jeff and I came up with a funny little name, J and J Office Hours.
Yeah, or J Square, I'm okay with J Square.
That's a math, that's a math, uh.
You gotta throw it out there.
Yeah, where, where, you know, Jeff and I would go around to, to the buildings and, and, and discuss, you know, broader issues with them. We do not want it to turn into, and it will not turn into, folks, you know, talking about principals or, you know, administration, that's, that's not our role to go in there and, and, and it should be, and, and I think some of the responses even said that they, they wanted to talk about more need, needs-related things and, and, and talk to us directly about that, so we're gonna implement time where we go and, uh, invite the staff to come and talk to us directly about these things. As far as meetings go, we're going to review and discuss the meeting, all the meeting schedules in the district. PLCs, faculty meetings, coordinator meetings, you know, tech coordinator meetings, all, all these meetings and their purpose. Are they really serving the purpose that we want them to serve, or that we thought that they served when we set up this meeting schedule? We wanna make sure that there, that there's efficiency and that there's alignment with our strategic plan. We're, we're not gonna have meetings just to have meetings as a show, it needs to, it, it needs to be, uh, effective, and so we need to review that as an administrative group. And, um, but that is a concern brought by our teachers, that they, they feel like, uh, some meetings are just for the sake of having meetings, so we just wanna, we're gonna, we're gonna review the purpose of those. Another thing that, that not, it wasn't found in this AI summary, but, you know, a few comments were made, uh, but more than a few. But that billing and classroom budgets have not been adjusted, so we, we need, you know, the, the request was adding more into the billing budgets and classroom budgets, you know, so that they could, um, get the needed supplies, I guess, and Jeff, your suggestions are well taken, I think, you know, we need, also think that we need to quantify this. How many, um, requests are being denied due to budget across the district? Once we have a handle on that, we can understand, do we really need to increase the budget, or are there other reasons for not purchasing things? So we, I think we need to have a handle on that before we talk about increasing those budgets, and that may be where we end up, but we're gonna take a look at it and make sure. We're going to, um, hold administrative leadership development, just, just for our own purposes, across the district, um, all administrators. Jeff and I met with Tony Day, who did some, um, collaboration work, teamwork, uh, with, with the administrative team thi- this past school year, through, uh, Western New York Educational Service Council, we met with them, um, last week to plan some professional development for our leadership team across the whole, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six school year. We're talking about potentially including deans of students, you know, coaches and that, because, you know, they're, they take on leadership roles as well. But this is for our own professional growth and development, um, as administrators. Student behaviors, uh, again, this was, this was an, uh, an issue highlighted across the, the survey, I would think, I would say. I think, you know, we're gonna continue to train staff on restorative practices, cause I think that's important. And also continue the proactive behavioral interventions that are in place in our buildings. But I think we also have to discuss as teams and committees, how do we mini, how do we work to minimize disruptive behaviors that are happening in the buildings? You know, there are increased needs, there are increased social, emotional needs across the, across the, the student body. How can we minimize those disruptive behaviors in the classrooms so that teachers can teach and other students can learn? And, you know, try to stop the behavior so the students that are disrupting can learn. So this is, this is a complex issue, and we're gonna, but we're gonna tackle it because our, our teachers, it's important to them, it's important to our administrators too, because they're spending lots of time on disruptive behaviors as well. Uh, time was also, uh, so, a theme brought up across the district, and what we're gonna look to do is potentially provide more half-days in the district calendar. To give teachers time to do things that they, that they need to do. We're also, in conjunction with that, looking to develop a plan to supervise students in the afternoon, so that, um, it eases the potential burden on families. Cause that's something that, the families will say, during a half-day, I, now I have to take off work, and, you know, uh, we don't want that for, for folks, so we're gonna look at, uh, ways that we can potentially, you know, supervise students here during those half-days to, to get, to help those families. I think the last, the last major point that I wanted to highlight tonight, um, out of that survey was that new teachers, I think, felt that they needed more attention. They need more, uh, I guess, orientation on, on how things work in the district. And so, uh, what we did is we surveyed the, the non-tenured teachers, un, it was anonymous, just like the other one. And, um, the survey is out now, it's not closed, it's still open, um, and we're gonna develop a plan of action based on their feedback to help support them. Whether, you know, intermediate school has a great model of, uh, uh, new beginnings, I think you call it, where you meet with your, your new, your te- new teachers, I think that's something that we wanna grow and, uh, use to help new teachers across the district. And we're not talking about just brand-new teachers, it could be teachers that are new to Maryvale and don't understand how, how, you know, specific things work in this district. So we have a lot, there's a lot of, uh, again, raw data and a lot of work to do, but, um, I think we're gonna, uh, again, ensure that this is something that's useful for us and helps us continue to, uh, move the district ahead, support for us. Any questions?
So, uh, once, how many times a year are you planning on doing this?
That's, at least once a year, I, you know, I, I, we're gonna continue to do this, um, cause I, I, how valuable I, I think it was. Uh, I don't, I don't know how many times you wanna survey folks, I mean, you, you, you talk about best practice for your work.
Yeah, I mean, we do once a year, and I think it takes a year to kinda get through everything and, and look at it, and that's why we talked about doing this initially. You know, because you can't fix everything at once, obviously, so I think as you go, you kinda ask, as we talked about earlier, you know, you're kinda asking the same questions and you see how the answers are changing and morphing and, you know, thirty-eight percent's a statistically good number, but, you know, I'd like to see eighty percent of our staff, you know, across the board, answer, um, you know, because the more responses we get, the better the data's gonna be, to help us.
I also like the time of the year we did it rather than the end of the year, because, and maybe even move it a little earlier, because if we learn things in there, we're in the middle of budget development. Maybe we could use that data to help us inform the next year's budget. And then do things like we're doing now, like planning staff development, so maybe the timing, maybe a little earlier than what we did this year, but.
I, I was gonna say, that's funny, you bring up budget, um, when you were talking about the, how many teachers have gotten rejected due to budget, I would almost expand that when you're doing that research to say how many teachers haven't even asked, because it's been rejected so many times, they've just thrown their hands up in the air and they just buy it out of their own pocket. You know, so it's gonna be skewed data of how many just aren't even asking any.
Yeah, that's good, that's a good point.
So. Well, it's good, thank you for putting it together for us, and much easier than reading all the raw data, but.
And hopefully, I mean, as you start rolling out action plan items, and it's expressed to the teachers too, that these are, these are action plans created as a result of the survey, to hopefully increase that number up from thirty-eight percent, so hopefully see a better response for next year too, so.
When you started that.
We'll talk about data for the next time.
Yeah, I, I do have to thank you, Jeff, for all your helping, helping me sort through all this, this data, and, and helping me with the AI and it's good, good to have another set of eyes on it too, thank you.
All right. All righty, back during London.
Sounds good.
I would recommend that the board approve the financial non-personal consent agenda items one through four as submitted.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I recommend the board approve the personnel consent agenda items one through four as submitted.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
I'll second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Who votes for this?
I'd recommend the board approve the ROC participation, the PAs as presented, this is data security, a data security agreement between the district and OCS.
Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Like to recommend the board approve the disposition of surplus books as presented.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd recommend the board approve the disposition of surplus equipment as presented.
Do we have a motion?
A motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, I'd like to recommend that the board approve the settlement agreement with a former employee as presented.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think they approve election inspectors or additional election inspectors.
It's two more election inspectors to round out, um, well, the total of four election inspectors and myself for the vote on May twentieth.
I'd like to recommend the board approve the election inspectors as presented in the agenda.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would like to recommend the board approve the contract amendment agreement with the superintendent.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, Erie County updates, uh, we kinda ran through them earlier, but the, the scholastic awards dinner. I know we have a bunch of administrators going, the annual dinner is June twelfth, let's know if you're going to be able to attend. With your dinner choice. Yeah, I don't think that was one of the options. New York State School of Words, I don't believe there's anything. Is there any resident input?
Yes. Couple things. First of all, thank you, Bill, for your crew, uh, taking care of our DUCO meeting, everything was set up, so, uh, the boss could do his, uh, budget thing on the last Thursday, uh, on the fifth, they're gonna be, um, um, a picnic, right? You're the vice president, I won't be there, all right, so, um, do wanna thank you guys for opening it up for us. For all the administrators here, um, don't forget, on the fifth of June, it's gonna be for the police, we have the Do the Right Thing program. All right, I wanna see some, I wanna see some Maryville people there, okay? I'm proud of what our kids are doing and, and, and they deserve to be honored for what they do in the classrooms, and there's a lot of them. So I know you, you got all your teachers and, but just encourage them to please put that thing in, cause I talked to, uh, I, I talked to Officer, uh, Paul Nazareth, and he says, uh, it's gonna be the fifth, he says, tell me, get the stuff in, I says, okay, fine, you know, but they have to go through all, I believe, four districts, so they have to break it up, but I wanna see some of our people there. The other thing is, I gotta, um, today I was given a name for another, uh, woman who would like to help out as far as senior volunteers. And, um, I guess I took over running the thing, but I shouldn't be doing this, other people should be doing it, because I'm not part of the, I'm part of the district by now. But, uh, I'd like to get with Mr. Hazel, maybe someday to talk to him about maybe before, uh, we come back to school in September, we have a time set aside for all senior volunteers to come in and get an idea of, you know, refresher of what we, what is, what we could do, what we can't do, and all the, all the information from the, the district of what senior volunteerism is. I think we're the only district that has this, I talked to people in Buffalo, there ain't nothing like this. I was gonna talk to, uh, what's the guy's name from, uh?
Mr. Zip.
Mr. Zip, was gonna ask him, but we hit, we hit him for other things, so I figured I'll leave that alone, but he, he, he remembered that we did, oh yeah, you guys did the program, and it's like, how come you guys don't do it? The other part is, this is just for the primary school, cause I think all of our kindergarten classes are pretty well full, so now we're going into the first and probably second grade, okay? Have any of the, I'll, I'll, I'll ask you guys, for the other, uh, district, for the other, um, buildings, whatever. Has anybody ever brought it up to you, cause I was here with you, um, maybe in your classes for, you got what?
Middle school.
Middle school.
We asked a couple of people that have senior volunteers come in, especially vets that could talk about, uh, some of the history and things of that nature. It's getting harder, COVID kinda stopped a lot of that, where, you know, we weren't getting visitors in, and it just never was able to gain traction after that.
Okay, well, I've heard of, of other things, I'm also a member of Chitewaata Historical Association, and, uh, Maureen just passed away, who was ahead of it, but another gentleman was, is took, take, took his place, and he wants to try to get into the schools and tell people the history of Chitewaata. And I said, well, you get it together, you know, get something down that you're not all over rabbit trails all over the place, get something down, and then I can talk to, um, whoever, whether it be the, I don't think, I don't think your kids would want it, but the older kids will want to hear what the, what the history of the, of the town is of, where, where it came from. And who, you know, everything about it, so it's very, very interesting.
Rabbit, rabbit, where was the first crab apple tree?
I beg your pardon? I grew up on the west side of Buffalo, pal.
Tree law for a reason.
But, um, I just want, I just want all our seniors, volunteers to know that we're all on the same, we're, we're, we're all, they know what to do, okay? Because we've had some, uh, issues that we told them, if there's something wrong with a child, and they tell you something, we are, we are mandatory reporters. And I report, I reported a couple of things to the teacher, and then they went on with that, cause I have to do it not only as a, as a chaplain and as minister, but also as a senior volunteer. So, um, there's no ifs, ands, or buts, but some of the people, they don't understand that, and they wanna be all on the same page, that we know what we have to do, what, uh, what we can do, what we can't do, and maybe we can get together and talk about it.
Is that something that we should try and coordinate for you, and then you can coordinate with the group?
Wait a minute, no. I can, I coordinate with the group, I, I know who all the people are, but, uh, I would, I would want somebody in authority here to coordinate.
Correct.
Yeah, I make a problem.
But we gotta know who to coordinate with.
Talk to me, well, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll give it to these people and that, and I'll, I'll, I'll let them know, you know, we, we need to sit down, we need to go over our feedbacking, so then we'll be there, no ifs, ands, or buts, what we can do and that, not only that, after second grade is full, and people still wanna come, because now people in the senior center are hearing what's happening, because our, our senior volunteers are, are the senior center, other people are asking, what can we do? Well, I don't know, you know, I don't know if you would want, who's got, who's got the building before you? Do you know? Okay, I don't know if she would want senior volunteer coming in for, if they would. You know, okay, I don't know if she would want senior volunteer coming in for, if they would have the same needs that, kidding, uh, what the primary school is. I don't know. I've never been in your, never been in your building, I've been in your, I've never been in your.
Anytime you wanna tour, Mr. DeAngelo would be happy to give you the tour.
You did once. No, I I seen the building.
Well, you just said you've never been in the building.
No, 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 I'm talking about. Your day's coming tomorrow, pal.
Okay.
So it sounds like you're gonna be the coordinator.
No, 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 no.
No, no.
Yeah. I got enough things going on in my life. No, I'll help out, believe me, my heart's in this, cause I see where it was, I see it's growing, and now it's starting to pick up momentum. Because of people talking, and people are bored, they're doing, they're retiring, it's like, I still wanna do something. All right, well, you know, we'll give you something to do. The one thing I warned them is you're gonna fall in love with the kids. Understand that you will fall in love with the kids. So, um, this is something to think about, you know, cause Maryvale's, like I said, it's, they're the ones who have done something about this. I don't see anybody else doing it. Unless I'm mistaken, I don't know. Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
I wanna help you, er.
I don't think we're just gonna fall in love with those folks. No, I don't have a. With that, um, I need a motion to enter executive session for the employment of a particular person.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Longer than Doctor Day.